Welcome, everybody. We'll get the meeting started here. Our apologies for being late, but we've been meeting for the last hour and a half, and some people needed some things attended to before we started here. Today is January 28th. This is the St. Louis Park School Board, and everyone is welcome to be here. Our agenda tonight is a call to order, the approval of the agenda, open forum, the superintendent's report. The discussion items tonight will include a technology update, the school calendar discussion, a space needs update, WMAP joint exercise of powers agreement changes, our consent agenda approval, the action agenda, communications and transmittals, and finally adjournment. We've got a full schedule tonight, so looking for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Larry, second?
Second.
Second by Ken, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
I had a discussion point. Do we want to talk or add anything about listening dates? We could also, we could kick that off. But we should maybe talk about at least how many we want to have, maybe. Can we add that to the agenda?
Is it possible?
If we're just, I mean, I had a question about it, and I know, as soon as we can get them up, if we're going to have any of this, at least pick a month and then we can narrow down the dates for next meeting or something.
Okay. What we thought we would do is just mention it as either tailing on to the superintendent's report and just say that we're going to consider those dates. So, all right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Thank you. It's a 7-0 vote. Open forum. Is there anyone here to speak to open forum tonight? No one appearing. We'll move on. Next is the superintendent's report.
Well, as this community knows is that we had a very, we had a very sad event happen in our school district, in our community, and I wanted to start off with just saying thanks for the staff support of being there for our students. It was unbelievable how this community came together. And one example that I would like to have a big thank you to is to Park Nicollet. I was called after hearing about Carla Christensen by the president of their foundation saying, "We would like to help with flu shots. What do you think?" So, we were able to work through a lot of red tape, and they offered free flu shots to our students. They gave out over 275 flu shots to our students. That's in addition to all the other families that had already decided to go forward and have their shots. It's over another 6% of our students that were immunized. So I just would like to say thank you to this great community that supports each other and how sad it was. So, and then Bruce, you said you'd like to talk about listening sessions as part of this report, so I'll turn it over to you.
Jim, I'll turn it over to you.
I guess we should maybe just determine how many we're going to have in likely months, and then we can work on it between now and next board. We need to solidify dates and places and whatever. So I guess the question would be, how many do we think we want to have, and when would they likely be?
Okay, and I'll go ahead and open that up to discussion. We have a number of items coming up. We have a number of committees working. We have a number of, the budget is coming forth here in the next couple of months. We have negotiations also coming up, and so there probably going to be opportunities, especially over the next five months, for at least two, possibly three. And so I'll open that up to the board and hear your ideas.
Well, why don't I just throw it out there? Let's suggest we do one in February, one in March, and one in April, and then we can assess what's hot or not still in the district as we head towards the end of the school year and see if we need to, we can then decide if we need to add anymore.
I see heads nodding in that direction. Any other ideas? All right. Cindy, would you do that, please? Set that up on the agenda.
Yes, I'll get some various places and times and have ready for the next board meeting. Is that what you'd like? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, that concludes the superintendent's report. Under discussion items, the first item is the technology update. Tom Marble and his team will kick it off. Thank you, Tom.
Superintendent, board members, we're here to give you an update on some of the things going on that we're working on with the strategic plan, strategy two, result two, which talks about teachers using 21st century classroom technology to engage students and accelerate their achievement across multiple areas in the classroom. I've asked several people to come up and speak with you tonight about their experiences directly in the classroom, with what they're doing with technology, the results that they're seeing in their classroom. We're going to have Megan Jones, who's a third grade teacher in Peter Hobart, talk about her use of the Smartboard in the classroom. We're going to be introducing our newest technology trainer to the district, Angela Franson, who is working with the middle school and high school, and some of the initiatives that are going on over at the middle school right now using technology. And then we're going to end up talking a little bit about our BYOD initiative, Bring Your Own Device initiative, and Trevor Paulson from the high school, who's been working with me as a kind of a pilot through this, is going to talk about what he hopes to be doing as we bring BYOD forward and expand its use. And Nate Tangen, our other technology trainer for the elementary schools, is just on hand in case you want to ask him a question. So, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Megan, and we'll get started.
We are? Not quite here yet.
Well, we can skip ahead if you wish. Should we start with Angela? If she's, and we can come back to her? Okay. So Angela Franson came to us from Bloomington Schools. She was a middle school math teacher and technology coach for 13 years. She replaced Anne Jurwitz, who left us this fall. So Angela's going to come over and talk to us a little bit about a couple, a few things going on over in the middle school with iPads, Chromebooks, and the teachers using their gradebook. So Angela.
It's been a great transition so far. I'm super excited with the technology available and the resourcefulness of staff, and the support that I've gotten across the district has been amazing. So it's been a wonderful transition. It was quite a trust fall to step out of my math classroom where I was in the same room for 12 years and try something new. So it's been awesome and great. Specifically, my fourth day on the job, I was put in charge of training over at the middle school, so I was ready to go and just kind of jumped right in to try out new things. But moving across, can we, oh, there we go ahead. The first thing, one of the first things I've been doing is working with those iPads and getting them updated for the middle school to be working and running efficiently. There's a seventh grade teacher, an eighth grade teacher over at the middle school who is doing incredible things with differentiation, really helping those kids kind of work at their own pace, and she's using the iPads to allow kids to decide what course of action they want to take within that curriculum. They can kind of go different paths, and depending on where they want to go, she helps them get there by giving them a menu of options. So it's really cool, the things that are happening there, and I know that down the road we'll bring her in to show you more specifically what she's up to. But that's where the iPads are being used. We brought in Chromebooks these last couple of weeks to work with the writing program and the RTI classes that are happening at the middle school. And the RTI classes have been very successful this year, and I've heard good things from the staff there. And they brought in Chromebooks, which are specifically a Google product. They work kind of like a little netbook or a little mini laptop, and it allows kids to have a greater writing surface, having a full keyboard. So it's been helpful to kids. We're just rolling those out now to see how they're going to work and be integrated across different areas. But writing specifically is where we're looking to help out students there. And then the last thing, which is also the first thing I worked on, was doing some training with the Power Grade program. So through the powerful tools inside Power Grade, we were helping teachers filter their data so that they can help address the achievement gap and be able to work specifically within different groups of kids and different ethnicities. And it's helping teachers to be able to then direct their instruction and guide their instruction for different strengths and weaknesses that they're finding in their classes. So teachers I've really seen now across the board are using that data powerfully and in very good ways. Any questions about that?
What we're showing you here on this screen was just, this is a screenshot of the gradebook itself and what the teachers, what Angela, her first task was to come in and show, she'd never seen the product before, and in three days had to go in and train the middle school staff on how to create these filters in the left-hand column. And then, once those filters are there, so they can filter on ethnicity or other criteria that they set up in their gradebook, and be able to, at a glance, see how those specific kids out of their class are performing based upon, in comparison to the other students in their class. And so this is helping in their PLC work and concentrating on those black and brown students that we're looking to bring, you know, close that achievement gap. So this is really one of the powerful tools that teachers are using. Looks like Bruce has something.
I'm just interested in the move from Bloomington to here.
Yeah.
I'm always interested in comparisons to nearby districts.
You bet.
How does our technology compare to Bloomington's technology? What are you seeing?
That's a, that's a very good question. Bloomington has a lot of stuff. We had a very rich district when it comes to technology, and I've always been impressed with how many things that we have. And we've always had a great asset tool. We've had several computers in a classroom for the teacher and the students, and you've had lots of tools, but we always, we have not had the support structure in place to help integrate those tools. So they're just now kind of getting started in that process of making sure that there are staff at each building that can help bring out those tools better. And different buildings had different support structures in place that were more successful than others, and so I wouldn't say that they're deficient in any way, but it's just a different method, whereas here I'm seeing a lot more focus put on support, which is great for me. We're really, I'm really appreciating that role because teachers do really need some ideas. And what I've told teachers so far in my role is that I'm here to be your time. Time is always the thing that teachers are lacking when it comes to having training and being able to use tools in a way that's meaningful and being able to try new things. So I've told teachers that I'm going to be your time so that I can help you put those things into place and give you tutorials and just work side by side with people, so. Yeah.
That's excellent. The other thing I'm interested in is Chromebooks.
Yeah.
Google is obviously a powerful company within the country. They're taking over the world. But I think that the idea of Chromebooks with such a powerful ally as Google, if it works, it could be really super. Could you tell us just a little bit more about that, or are we just learning ourselves?
Well, I actually had a benefit in Bloomington. I did a pilot with the Chromebooks for six months in my classroom, so coming here was great to be able to implement those and have some background to that. I really found that they're super simple and very easy to use. They boot up in eight seconds. So whereas a laptop, you're going to have to wait for it to warm up and get onto the network and go through all that syncing process, with Chromebooks you don't have to wait for that. They're pretty much instantaneous. Kids log in with their SLP apps account, and they're right there in the, in the Google domain. So what happens is it's really just a browser. So as a normal laptop would have programs, and you'd have to have an operating system and all these other components, the Chromebook is just like Firefox or Safari, and it uses the Google Chrome browser. So kids are right in their apps account, and they can be working within just a minute or so. So I found especially with my special ed students and students that had a hard time finding things, finding where they saved things or looking for different places in the computer, that the Chromebook really negated all of that and got them right working, and they didn't have to get confused about where they're supposed to be. And because it's within Google Apps, it automatically saves their documents, allows them to share things really easily with myself and with the students that are working with themselves around themselves, and it was just an awesome tool. Yeah.
Yeah, so the Chromebooks is the, I think I've seen it with all my kids at home, but it's the, where you see all the icons, and then you just click on an icon and it brings you right to the software, the program that you want to use, correct?
There are some icons. They have apps, a lot like the iPad apps that you find in iPads, but they're, they're apps that are within the browser themselves. So some of them have the apps, or you'll see like those icons like that. Others of them, it just brings up the internet browser right away. So there's like two or three places they can go, and that's it. So it's simplified.
Yeah, it's a very nice program.
It is. It is, and they're cheap. They're very inexpensive compared to a lot of other tools that are out there. Yeah.
I had a couple of other questions for you.
Well, all right.
Where's the Chromebooks? You guys done with Chrome? Good? Okay. So Tom, you were talking about the, the program where the gradebook, I think it was called?
Correct.
Okay. And you identified that it was for identifying black and brown, or black kids or people that were deficient. It actually, you can filter down to the deficient ones, right? And then help them, not necessarily a class of deficiencies.
Correct. The teacher themselves can set up the filter in many different ways, you know, if they want to look at specific ethnic populations, if they want to look at special education students within their classroom, you know, it just helps them to get a really quick visual snapshot of, based upon the assignments and scores and whatever they've had, they have in their gradebook, they can see a snapshot comparison at that point in time about how that subset of students is doing against the rest of the class.
Sure, for that subject matter and things.
Right.
Great, sounds good.
I had a follow-up to one of your earlier reports, Angela. When you were talking about you're the teacher's time, is that, are they coming to you and say, "Look, I want to do this or that," and then you can help them? Is that, I assume that's one aspect of your job when a teacher comes up? But is the other, are you being proactive, going to the teacher and saying, "Here's what you could do." I mean, I know your, math is your specialty, but can you, are you going to like the social studies teacher and saying, "Hey, here's how you could, we have this. Have you thought about how you do it, and here I have some ideas?" Is that part of?
Absolutely. Nate and I have been actually putting together, we're calling our marketing plan. So we market ourselves, and we know that we're here to serve, and that is, that's the end, end result right there, is that we're here to serve our teachers. And I've already told people that there's no noes when it comes to me, that I will help them do anything they need to do. So it's really been across the board. I've had very simple questions or kind of very tech-related, very technical questions all the way up to, I'm really trying to think of a way that I can better engage my students because I'm kind of bored with what I'm doing right now, so I want some new ideas. So I have had the opportunity of working on a team in a middle school, so I've been across all content areas and worked across the board with everybody. So I've been able to do that for several years now and have a pretty good arsenal of ideas. So, yeah, it's a good question.
I'd also like to make sure, especially because you're, you were a math teacher, Angela, I, our math scores, you know, need to be raised. I mean, everybody's due. But the fact is that I think that can be a really helpful area. I'd really like to see you set some goals there with the teachers and see those math scores come up.
Yes, and I have to say today, being part of the professional development that happened at the high school, I've been in a, in a school with 70% poverty in Bloomington now for several years, and we've been asking those same questions on how to get that achievement gap up. And I have to say that you are a lot further when it comes to just having those conversations about what, what can really happen and being able to just lay out on the table what's there and what's, what's the reality of what's happening. And that's just a hard place to get for a lot of people, and so I'm really excited to see what's happening here and how good the conversation is.
I have one question to that one, before you go.
Great, yes.
So, so are you bringing some tools with this technology, knowledge that you have and the math knowledge? Is there tools that you have in your backpack?
Oh, I certainly hope so. You bet. You bet. I have had a lot of experience with Moodle, which is the environment that St. Louis Park has taken on the last several years, and the Google Apps domain has been a big push that I've been a part of in Bloomington as well. So those are the two big places that I see there being a real future, especially with collaboration and getting kids with those Web 2.0 tools. The Google domain is really going to get us there. So I'm excited to keep pushing those and giving ways to efficiently use them with kids and meaningfully use them with kids, and then let alone just the thousands of places you can go with YouTube and different places like that that are just always changing and ever evolving. So I'm excited to, now it's my job to keep abreast of all those things, and that's, I'm pretty excited.
One of the, I'll just add to that. One of the expectations I have of Nate and Angela is they are involved with groups outside of our district, the Ties Kick group that meets, what are they, monthly, the Google cohort group here in Minnesota, all of those things, keeping up to date with their colleagues and what other districts are doing and what they're finding is working. And that, that I see as a key point of these positions here, because that's where they're going to be bringing the new ideas to the staff in our district as well. Looks like Megan, you ready to go? Okay. We'll back up, and Megan from Peter Hobart's going to talk a little bit about the Smartboard use in her classroom, so.
Hi, I'm Megan Jones. I teach third grade at Peter Hobart, and I was actually lucky enough to get a Smartboard installed into my classroom in the middle of the year last year, and this is my first year having it from the very beginning of the school year on, and I love it. It has totally changed my teaching, so I'm just here to talk about what the Smartboard looks like in my classroom, and then also how we use it together as a third grade team and within our building. So I just tried to think about a way to break down my own day and how I use the Smartboard in my classroom. And the first thing is, as upon entering the classroom, my students see my morning message projected on to our Smartboard, and I have an interactive question for my students to check in with every day. So they walk right into the classroom, they see their tasks, everything is written all up there, projected onto the Smartboard for them, and then they have a way that they need to check in in the morning. For example, this morning's question was if they could write down one form of communication, since our IB planner currently is about communicating. So as the students would come in, they'd just pick up the pen, they'd write their answer, and then they'd get started on their morning work. Another way that I use it every, almost every day is we, as a team, we often share Smart Exchange lessons. So Smart Exchange is actually the software that is along with the notebook software on our computers, and it allows us to shop and browse and download these lesson plans that are already out there in the internet, on the internet, and for, that have been developed by other teachers. And we can choose a strand or a specific standard that we're looking for and differentiate it and then download it onto our Smartboards, and it's often very interactive. We use it for both math and reading. It often is highly motivational for the students to use the Smartboards. It's like a giant computer in the room, and they're really excited to touch it and write on it, and, you know, they can draw their, they use their fingers to draw on it and all those things. It's also very motivational for their behavior, because they know that I'm only going to be calling on students who can show me self-control to use my giant computer that's on the wall. So they are often, you know, very quiet, and they want a turn to be able to play on the Smartboard. It's very engaging. Students are very motivated. The next way that I use it every day is we do guided math. I teach guided math in my, in my classroom as well as my third grade team, which means we teach math in a workshop format. I have three differentiated groups in my class that rotate through three different tasks throughout the time, throughout the day, or the math time. So they rotate through different activities, they have different centers, and I'll project, I project their to-do lists onto the Smartboard so that they can see, this is my job, one, two, and three, and then I meet with the teacher. And frequently in my classroom, the Smartboard is one of the centers. So if they're rotating through three centers, one of them is with me, the, one of them might be an activity on the Smartboard. It could be rolling the dice and adding up the sums or, you know, different things like that. A lot of those lessons we either develop together as a team or we download from Smart Exchange. A big one that we've been using both this year and last year is the Readworks website, which we can download grade level reading passages right onto our computer and then project them onto the Smartboard. And then using the Smartboard tools, we can teach the students how to highlight passages, how to annotate notes, how to pull out important information, and we do it as a whole group. So I'm teaching them highlighting skills, and I'm teaching them how to read a passage for understanding, and then they can answer comprehension questions, and we're doing it all together. So it's really scaffolding their learning. It's perfect for our MCA practice, which we've really been kind of picking up the pace here with teaching some test-taking skills as we're going into MCAs this spring, and it's perfect to introduce as far as a whole group practice, since it's large enough for everybody to see. And then every day I use it with IB, our IB lessons for interactive presentations. So I actually included just a clip of a timeline that we have created. Again, the planner that we just finished was about communication, and we've studied communication throughout civilizations. So that was just one way that we could, the students could interact with the lesson that we're learning. So they were actually moving the dates and times around, and they were also studying some images from each of those civilizations. We could also, with our IB, it helps us give a really instant class search. A lot of the times we have some questions that come up, and they say, "Well, tell me more about, what do hieroglyphics look like?" You can just pull up Google right on your Smartboard, and you can just image search hieroglyphics right then, and you get an instant result for these inquiry-based questions. And then we also use Discovery Streaming and Brain Pop videos to assist us in those as well, which are just some software that we can just pull up a video at the press of the board. That's how I use it in my classroom. As far as in my grade level, in my team, we use our Smartboards quite frequently within our PLCs. One way we have done that is we have created Google Docs on our St. Louis Park, you know, Google Apps, and we share and project during meetings. So there have been meetings where we've manipulated data into our small, small groups. If we're trying to make small groups for RTI, response to intervention, which I will speak more to in a little while about that, but we've also been able to project our PLC logs, so we are kind of all engaged in what is being recorded and all of that, and it's a way for all four of us as a team to just kind of have everything right in front of us and be able to be engaged ourselves. In our PLCs, we also share lessons that we found on Smart Exchange or lessons that we've created. We're able to share those with each other. And then we often will use our team time to write and project our guided math lessons together, since the four of us in third grade, we all teach guided math, so we will often co-plan those together and create. So that clip up there of the little matrix is an example of what my students would see on their Smartboard during their guided math time. So that would have been a lesson plan that we had planned together as a team, the third grade teachers, and they can see when they're meeting with a small group with a teacher, what their independent work is, and what their to-do jobs are. So we use a lot of our team time together planning those lessons so that they're ready for our guided math. And then lastly, we use Smartboards. We rely, I think, I rely quite heavily on my Smartboard for my RTI teaching time. So we, as a team, we take pre-tests and post-tests, post-tests in both math and reading on specific strands, and we organize our data in Google Docs together as a team, we teachers. So we organize and we share our data as a team, and then we manipulate that data into creating small groups and interchange into those groups so that our lowest students are meeting together right where they're at, our middle and our high, and I know Jen's going to talk about RTI later, so she can kind of fill you in on that. But as far as Smartboards go, it is perfect for us to use for differentiated instruction to teach those groups. For example, once I'm in, these were two examples that I came up with. When I had my, the lowest math group in my class, with I had the struggling students, we were moving and manipulating pictures on the Smartboard. So they were literally just dragging some manipulative objects, whether they be teddy bears or, I don't know, whatever manipulative I chose that day, and they were practicing adding and subtracting them. So it was just a real hands-on, engaging activity for those students to really see addition and subtraction. But then when I had the highest group of students in my, in my class for RTI, for math, I found a word problem game show where the students were introduced to multi-level, pretty high-level, multiple-step word problems, and then they had to basically beat the clock. There was this little song that went with it, you know, Jeopardy-style, and a buzzer that they had to ring in their answers. So again, another very engaging and exciting way where these students are practicing some really higher-level thinking. So in conclusion, this, our Smartboard has just really been an excellent addition to my classroom, and I know that I'm speaking for my team when I say that we just couldn't live without them. We love them so much. So that's all that I have for you.
Any questions?
Thank you for that. That was enthusiastic and clear, and, and what grade did you say you taught?
Third.
I tell you, I want to enroll.
Oh, cute. Thank you.
Question.
What was it? Oh, yeah. Nordean can take all the credit for that.
Megan? Megan, so do you guys also use the clickers?
Yes, I do.
Yes, you do?
Mm-hmm.
With the Smartboard or is it separate?
I've done them both. I've done it both, with Smartboards and without. Some, a few times that I've done the clickers is just for my own information, so I don't project anything at that time. I just want to be gathering data, but the kids really like to see their data recorded. So, and it's, it's kind of instant gratification for some of those students to be able to enter in data. I often will check in homework that way. If they, if there is a worksheet that I could just say, "You're going to enter in questions one through five" into your clickers and then be done. If they, if there is a worksheet that I could just say, you're going to enter in questions one through five into your clickers and then be done. They don't get to see their responses, so it's not necessarily, I can, I can control it that way. Where if I don't want them to see whether or not they got their answer correct or incorrect, but they, they, it still is checked in for me to see. So that's a great way for me to kind of keep an eye on which of my students are actually understanding the concepts and which ones are not. But it does still light up and show them that they have answered. And they see their numbers lit up and they get excited about that.
Helps you, so if you have to reteach or anything like that.
Exactly.
Sure. Question was for Tom, and I'll wait for it later.
Okay.
I have, I have one more. And I'm going to sound a little bit like a broken record tonight, but is there a way with third graders to make sure we see improvement? I mean, again, I love the technology, you know that I do. But the fact is, I want to find ways to measure that, to measure the improvement and watch the scores on, through our planners. I mean, I think IB, you know, is a great thing. We've seen our scores improve. We want to see them improve more. Are there ways to build that into the technology to show, here's where we were, here's where we are today, we know we're learning?
I think technology is playing a huge role in us monitoring our progress. I think, as far as my team, I think this year we have been so focused on our data. And we are literally testing every single thing we teach. And I don't, it's, today we took a pre-test on, on unit six in math. And they're just taking out their math workbooks and they're telling me, what do you already know about these math concepts that I'm about to teach you in unit six? Some of my students, I can see they have a pretty good understanding because they're high-level math students already. And many of them just give me a blank piece of paper and say, I don't know anything to do with this. I then take that information and I enter it into our team data on our Google Doc. And then we're able to see which of our students are really struggling in this concept or they have no framework of what we're teaching at all. And which of our students are already okay. So these students that are already okay, we're going to be moving into a group that's working on just enrichment and higher-level thinking and those kind of things. And then we're going to be able to focus on those students that got zeros and turned in this blank piece of paper and be able to find some exciting activities or, or at least small group activities to really hone in on the skills that they're missing. So, and then again, we post-test and then we enter in all of that data and we compare again. So it really is, I feel like almost every, Jen can speak to this too, three to five weeks, I think, we're reevaluating our data just constantly. And every strand, specifically in math, we are very heavy in math this year. So every single strand in math, we're just looking at addition and subtraction, what was their growth? So we're just really looking a lot.
Thank you, Megan. I, again, I echo Nancy here. Just to see your excitement and to see your excitement, to see those kids learn is, it's exciting to us. The standardized tests, we have to pass them. That's, that's a requirement. But to, just to know that learning is going on and to see your excitement, to see that learning going on, we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, our final topic tonight, just to bring you up to date on our BYOD, Bring Your Own Device initiative. We've been working to get our infrastructure in place over this past semester. We've got over some final hurdles here this last week, so I think we are poised to start moving forward and expanding its use in second semester. We met with the senior high school technology committee last week and working out communications home to parents policy around this. And, and we've pretty much got it down to a little bit of wordsmithing. Angela was involved with that as well. And so I think we're, we're poised to start opening this up and moving it forward. Our, our next steps will be obviously getting some communications home to parents and students, letting them know what this is about, what their responsibilities are, what, what our responsibilities are. So as part of this, as part of our meeting here at the senior high school this week, we had, Elizabeth Husing is a math teacher here at the high school. And she had her statistics classes do a survey of the students. And this is some of the results of the survey, just through a couple of charts up here. They were able to survey a little over 600 students, about 660 students here at the high school. Basic questions, how many of you have internet access outside of school? Right now, 97% answered that they have internet access outside of school. Do you have a personal device that you can bring and use at school? 87% answered yes. Had 13% that said they did not. And those of, those who said yes, this is just a pie chart breakdown of the type of device or devices that they said they had available to bring to school. So there's iPod touches, iPhones, Android tablets, Windows, Windows phones, Apple laptops, Windows laptops, iPads, Kindles, Nooks, you know, there's all kinds of devices out there that they indicated that they have ready to bring to school and be used as part of a BYOD classroom. So, leading into that, I've asked Trevor Paulson, who is an art and technology teacher here at the high school, to come and talk a little bit about, he's kind of been our guinea pig throughout this process. His students have brought in things, we, he's kind of worked, helped us work through some of the technical glitches. But he's got some ideas about how his classes, which are kind of non-traditional in, in the way you would think of a, a normal, you know, math or science or whatever class. But he's got some ideas about how BYOD would help him in his class, and he's going to share them with you here tonight.
All right, hello, again, Trevor Paulson. I teach here at the high school, technology education. Combination of graphics design, web page design, woodworking, construction, so quite a range of areas. BYOD, as far as what we were starting to look at is, or the part that we're going to present, or I'm presenting tonight, is more on the aspect in terms of the woodworking class and trying to move more of the actual curriculum online and to flip the classroom so more of their learning is done outside. And we can actually have more time spent in the woodshop, in on the machines, to be able to produce and work on some of the different projects. So rather than taking the time to test, to do all the normal work, they can do that outside where they have the access versus losing out on the time in the woodshop itself, because a lot of them don't have the tools at home to do so. So to be able to free up and have more time to produce those projects, to be able to go through and do some of that stuff. I captured just a couple of general screenshots of kind of the start of that point. We've moved into Core Sites, which is a version of Blackboard, very similar to Moodle, but a way to distribute the curriculum in kind of a format. So that's kind of the general welcoming screen. And then over on the left-hand side is a number of places that they can pick from. Once they click on the tests, bring them to another spot, then click on the test that's been activated or that's been posted, and they'll come to a screen that looks similar to this. Kind of walking them through how long they have, how the testing system works, and then they can click begin. Once they start it, it goes into more of an interactive or visual side of testing. So as they're working through each question, I can put a picture, a slideshow with it to give them a little bit more of a concept or a visual, hopefully striking back some of the stuff that they've learned through the demonstrations and such, to be able to answer their questions. And they typically range between 13 to 15 questions. When they're done, they get instant feedback right away. So the test comes back, it shows them how long they've taken on the test, what their score is. And all the information gets recorded directly for me so I can keep track, better track of how kids are passing. And I have to sit there and collect the papers, go up to a machine, run it through. And then with the actual device, rather than having to try taking all the students up to a computer lab and wasting another day inside their testing, or if they don't pass it to go and do another retesting day, I can have a device or they can have their device inside the shop. So while everybody else is still continuing to work, they can finish up on that aspect or have the ability while they're working in another class, they finish up to go through and review. With that, we're also trying to get more of the demonstrations online. So that way, if they miss because of a sporting event, they're sick, we can, don't have to take a whole other day to re-demonstrate everything. They can go on, watch the video, once they have that video taken care of, finish up with the testing program. So again, we can free up more of the time in class to do the work that they really need to do. Any questions? Yes?
Okay, sounds great. I was wondering about the, the testing, that's internet-based, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, so they just go on the internet, take the test, come back?
Right.
Can you go forward, back on them or?
Yep.
Okay, so flexibility to it.
On one of it, they can go forward or backwards if they get on, it's a time test, but they can save it and start it again later. So if they're in the middle of something or they get started and all of a sudden, oh, it's supper time, they can pause it, go do whatever they do, come back.
Is it time test-based? Does the instructor put the time test or time limits to it?
Yes.
So if you have students that have, that need more extra time to take tests and it's in their IDP or whatever?
Yep.
Then they would get access to that?
Yep.
So, so the students who don't have a device then, do they share one of the other students? Or how do you do, or do we have enough that we have a laptop in the room, they can use that, they trade off, or how does that work?
Some of them can trade off. We also have a couple, I have a, a small amount of devices already, but just not a classroom set, so I can't give one to everybody. So it's, instead of having to do the whole lab, I have some for those that don't have it. And then we can share those throughout. And most of the tests don't take the entire time period, but it is one of those that, for some students that are struggling or whatever, that need the extra time, they still have it without having to then. And like I said, we can work while we're simultaneously inside the woodshop, so those that are done can continue to work, yeah.
And did I hear that sometimes they'll take the test at night?
Yep.
So then they get that out of the way, then they get the classrooms to work on their project or something?
Right. They just, what we really need to do is have them signed off on the safety aspect before they're kind of get the free gamut of the shop. But as we're working through that, they can go through.
How are you able to monitor that, that, you know, dad's not taking the test at home?
Can't really monitor whether or not dad's taking the test, but it is a signed-in, they have to log in with the password to go in and take it. So it's locked out where they, just a random person can't go in and take it. They have to physically log in themselves. But as far as if they have somebody else going with it, there's that possibility. But, and then we also do the, that's part of our testing piece, the other part is their physical demonstration. So they have to also demonstrate that they understand those concepts in class and sign off on one of those sheets as well.
And that's where I guess you're monitoring them. So if they don't know the safety stuff, you're going to be able to recognize that pretty soon, because you'll be, you're, you're, you're walking around watching and answering questions, I assume.
Right, yep.
I'm guessing that your other side of your life, the graphic design classes, might be examples of limitations of Bring Your Own Device? Where you do, do, is that a class where we're using particular programs that need to be loaded onto a computer? Or are, are you finding that the BYOD option is going to be good for everything you teach?
It'll actually probably be good for everything, similar kind of concept, those demonstration time periods. I can podcast them, so if they're, whether it's on their device, there we have the computer, so they actually can pull it up that way as well. But if they want to review something at home that they're not quite understanding, they have that. Or in another class before they come, prepare for a question. So it will help out on, on all levels.
A couple of things I, and this is maybe for Tom, but I like, I like the BYO device and that we use the whole word, because orally it's sometimes hard to tell the difference when you say BYO whatever. Or BYO technology, BYOT, so I just as.
BYOT as well, right.
So as we're, you know, playing this out, I would just suggest perhaps we rethink the acronym. But I'm concerned about the 13% that don't have devices. And, and I'm concerned about any potential embarrassment in the class when everyone else has their whatever they have and I don't. And how are you handling that as an example? And how are you reading the vibes of the students? And how are we taking care to not increase a digital divide, but to shrink it with this program? And, and I want to say, I understand this is all voluntary, in case that got missed in the presentation. But I'm a parent at home and I'm saying, jeez, my kid's going to fall behind. This doesn't feel voluntary. How are we handling all of that?
As far as the class, the set, it's not as much as, it's, it's not required. It's a way for those to work if they have the ability outside of it without having to use a computer lab. Again, we have those devices down there so they can work and still have it. It's just a way that they can further themselves if they can, as well as there are the labs and they'd have their time during study halls or other areas.
Ads, Kindles, Nooks, you know, there's all kinds of devices out there that they indicated that they have ready to bring to school and be used as part of a BYOD classroom. So, leading into that, I've asked Trevor Paulson, who is an art and technology teacher here at the high school, to come and talk a little bit about, he's kind of been our guinea pig throughout this process. His students have brought in things, we, he's kind of worked, helped us work through some of the technical glitches. But he's got some ideas about how his classes, which are kind of non-traditional in, in the way you would think of a, a, a normal, you know, math or science or whatever class. But he's got some ideas about how BYOD would help him in his class, and he's going to share them with you here tonight.
All right, hello, again, Trevor Paulson. I teach here at the high school, technology education. Combination of graphics design, web page design, woodworking, construction, so quite a range of areas. BYOD, as far as what we were starting to look at is, or the part that we're going to present, or I'm presenting tonight, is more on the aspect in terms of the woodworking class and trying to move more of the actual curriculum online and to flip the classroom so more of their learning is done outside. And we can actually have more time spent in the woodshop, in on the machines, to be able to produce and work on some of the different projects. So rather than taking the time to test, to do all the normal work, they can do that outside where they have the access versus losing out on the time in the woodshop itself, because a lot of them don't have the tools at home to do so. So to be able to free up and have more time to produce those projects, to be able to go through and do some of that stuff. I captured just a couple of general screenshots of kind of the start of that point. We've moved into Core Sites, which is a version of Blackboard, very similar to Moodle, but a way to distribute the curriculum in kind of a format. So that's kind of the general welcoming screen. And then over on the left-hand side is a number of places that they can pick from. Once they click on the tests, bring them to another spot, then click on the test that's been activated or that's been posted, and they'll come to a screen that looks similar to this. Kind of walking them through how long they have, how the testing system works, and then they can click begin. Once they start it, it goes into more of an interactive or visual side of testing. So as they're working through each question, I can put a picture, a slideshow with it to give them a little bit more of a concept or a visual, hopefully striking back some of the stuff that they've learned through the demonstrations and such, to be able to answer their questions. And they typically range between 13 to 15 questions. When they're done, they get instant feedback right away. So the test comes back, it shows them how long they've taken on the test, what their score is. And all the information gets recorded directly for me so I can keep track, better track of how kids are passing. And I have to sit there and collect the papers, go up to a machine, run it through. And then with the actual device, rather than having to try taking all the students up to a computer lab and wasting another day inside their testing, or if they don't pass it to go and do another retesting day, I can have a device or they can have their device inside the shop. So while everybody else is still continuing to work, they can finish up on that aspect or have the ability while they're working in another class, they finish up to go through and review. With that, we're also trying to get more of the demonstrations online. So that way, if they miss because of a sporting event, they're sick, we can, don't have to take a whole other day to re-demonstrate everything. They can go on, watch the video, once they have that video taken care of, finish up with the testing program. So again, we can free up more of the time in class to do the work that they really need to do. Any questions? Yes?
Okay, sounds great. I was wondering about the, the testing, that's internet-based, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, so they just go on the internet, take the test, come back?
Right.
Can you go forward, back on them or?
Yep.
So flexibility to it.
On one of it, they can go forward or backwards if they get on, it's a time test, but they can save it and start it again later. So if they're in the middle of something or they get started and all of a sudden, oh, it's supper time, they can pause it, go do whatever they do, come back.
Is it time test-based? Does the instructor put the time test or time limits to it?
Yes.
So if you have students that have, that need more extra time to take tests and it's in their IDP or whatever?
Yep.
Then they would get access to that?
Yep.
So the students who don't have? So, so the students who don't have a device then, do they share one of the other students? Or how do you do, or do we have enough that we have a laptop in the room, they can use that, they trade off? Or how does that work?
Some of them can trade off, we also have a couple, I have a, a small amount of devices already, but just not a classroom set, so I can't give one to everybody, so it's, instead of having to do the whole lab, I have some for those that don't have it, and then we can share those throughout. And most of the tests don't take the entire time period, but it is one of those that, for some students that are struggling or whatever, that need the extra time, they still have it without having to then. And like I said, we can work while we're simultaneously inside the woodshop, so those that are done can continue to work, yeah.
And did I hear that sometimes they'll take the test at night?
Yep.
So then they get that out of the way, then they got the classrooms to work on their project or something?
Right, they just, what we really need to do is have them signed off on the safety aspect before they're kind of get the free gamut of the shop, but as we're working through that. They can go through.
How are you able to monitor that, that, you know, dad's not taking the test?
Can't really monitor whether or not dad's taking the test, but it is a signed-in, they have to log in with the password to go in and take it, so it's locked out where they, just a random person can't go in and take it. They have to physically log in themselves, but as far as if they have somebody else going with it, there's that possibility. But, and then we also do the, that's part of our testing piece, the other part is their physical demonstration. So they have to also demonstrate that they understand those concepts in class and sign off on one of those sheets as well.
And that's where I guess you're monitoring them, so if they don't know the safety stuff, you're gonna be able to recognize that pretty soon, cause you'll be, you're, you're, you're walking around watching and answering questions, I assume.
Right, yep.
I'm guessing that your other side of your life, the graphic design classes, might be examples of limitations of bringing your own device, where you do, do, is that a class where we're using particular programs that need to be loaded onto a computer? Um, or are, are you finding that the BYOD option is going to be good for everything you teach?
It'll actually probably be good for everything, similar kind of concept, those demonstration time periods, I can podcast them, so if they're, whether it's on their device, there we have the computer, so they actually can pull it up that way as well, but if they want to review something at home that they're not quite understanding, they have that, or in another class before they come, prepare for a question, so it will help out on, on all levels.
Um, a couple of things I, um, and this is maybe for Tom, but I like, I like the BYO device and that we use the whole word, cause orally it's sometimes hard to tell the difference when you say BYO whatever, or BYO technology, BYOT, so I just as we're-
BYOT as well, right.
So as we're on, on, you know, playing this out, I would just suggest perhaps we rethink the acronym. But I'm concerned about the thirteen percent that don't have devices, and, and I'm concerned about any potential embarrassment in the class when everyone else has their whatever they have and I don't, and how are you handling that as an example? And how are you reading the vibes of the students? And how are we taking care to not increase a digital divide, but to, to shrink it with this program? And, and I want to say, I understand this is all voluntary, in case that got missed in the presentation, but I'm a parent at home and I'm saying, jeez, my kid's gonna fall behind, this doesn't feel voluntary. How are we handling all of that?
As far as the class, the set, it's not as much as, it's, it's not required, it's a way for those to work if they have the ability outside of it, without having to use a computer lab. Again, we have those devices down there, so they can work and still have it, it's just a way that they can further themselves if they can, as well as there are the labs and they'd have their time during study halls or other areas where they can go, it's just as far as a class, it works better to have a device. I don't have one that everybody can use, I've got ten devices. So if we have ten other students or fifteen other students that have them, now we've got, everybody can work, some of them are using the ones that we're providing, some of them are using their own, in class to take it while, during that time period. So it's, it's not a, if you're, if you're without it, you're out of luck, yeah.
I think there's a, there's a big distinction, uh, that, that people have to get in their minds between a one-to-one program and BYOT or BYOD, um, in the fact that, uh, BYO, BYOT is not a requirement. It is a way to enhance, um, teachers, our, our, our teachers themselves are gonna have to find their way in this world and figure out exactly how they're gonna fit this into their classrooms. Um, you know, I, I, I don't know, um, uh, right off the top of my head, uh, how many kids in your pilot class actually had the device?
Um, out of the three classes, each one probably had fifty percent that registered a device, and out of the other fifty percent that didn't, there's probably a good twenty-five or thirty that had devices. They just, some they didn't have there, or they didn't want, they wanted to wait, cause they wanted to bring in and do their computer, not their smartphone, or they had different ideas that they wanted to register. And rather than, being it was more of a pilot and we were gonna be wiping out a lot of that stuff, they thought, ah, and it was right before the holiday season, so a lot of them like, I might be getting something new, I really don't want to lock myself into this right now, so I'm gonna wait, and I'm, so out of that test period, we have about half the kids, but majority of them said that they'd be able to bring something in.
And, and we're very conscious of that in, in our discussions that Angela and I were in with the Senior High Technology Committee, the, the equity piece is always at the forefront. How do we, uh, how do we, uh, shape the lesson plans in the classroom, knowing that this is not a one-to-one, uh, initiative? That we, uh, are grouping kids together, we're doing activities that where, or you're doing modular type, uh, situations where some of them will need the, uh, the, the device that day and others will not. So there's, there's strategies around that all the time, but I think it's part of the communication, or a very important part of the communications that be going home about this is, number one, it's not a requirement. Um, and number two, uh, i- if you don't have, if you don't have one and the teacher needs you to have one, then either we will find a device to fill in for that day or whatever. Um, but, um, you know, this is gonna be a growing thing and we're, we have to get into it and we have to see how it's gonna be working, but, um, we're very conscious about the, uh, the equity piece of it.
Thank you, Tom, and I think that's really reassuring that we do have some devices to share and that, and that we just maintain that level of awareness and training as we go forward.
And it may be, uh, as Angela shared with the, uh, with the price of devices like the Chromebooks, that it's something that we might be able to invest in ourselves at a much lower cost and have those devices available, or more of those type of devices a- available for students.
I, I was just gonna, you know, because I mean, the kids are gonna be doing, first of all, I, I like motivate of, of bringing the technology into the classroom, kids like that, that's how they're learning. Um, and that's what they're gonna be doing in their careers going forward, they're gonna have a device that's gonna assist them, whether it's a phone or a iPad or whatever, so that's great. And then, you know, maybe if we pass a tech levy, one way to kind of worry about some of these concerns are, you know, some districts decide, hey, we're gonna give every kid an iPad or whatever, but maybe if we find that we have enough kids who are bringing them and have them, and then we have it on a, like a checkout loan basis or something like that, I mean, we don't need to get the specifics, but just a thought, if we are fortunate enough to have some tech dollars.
Yep, and, and we're, we're looking that direction as well, yeah. Um, and i- in districts who have done these type of initiatives over one-to-ones, they do it because they may have tried a one-to-one initiative and find out that the students prefer their own stuff over the stuff that the school is giving them, so they didn't use it, the, the school-issued equipment, um, so they've gone this direction. Um, they tend to take care of their own stuff better, um, watch out for it more, and know how it works, as opposed to something that's not theirs, so. Um, you know, there's advantages and disadvantages to both, but, uh, um, you know, leveraging the things that the kids are walking through the door with in their pocket anyway is, is one way to, uh, approach it, and that's, uh, what we're gonna see happens for us, what's gonna happen for us.
Uh, Tom, we want to thank you, uh, Angela, Megan, Trevor, we, we really appreciate it, Nate. We, great job, you guys, uh, we, we want to, uh, great support. But Tom, before we let you go, we, we would like to, can you speak a little bit to the technology levy? Do you wanna talk a little bit about what we need to do here? It's not if we pass it, it is when we pass.
Yeah, it's, uh, um, coming due, um, hopefully we're, we're gonna go out for, uh, renewal of our referendum next fall. Uh, our original one was passed in, uh, fall of ninety-nine for fifteen years, and it's coming due again. Uh, it has been, it has become an absolutely critical piece of our operations in our district. Um, it now encompasses all support in the district, including, uh, people like Nate and Angela, um, and, uh, our technical support staff. Um, it encompasses anything that we're doing with cycle of life for our equipment in the district, everything from the wa- cords and wires in the walls, to the switches and routers that run our networks, to our telephone system, to, uh, the computers that are sitting in the classrooms and in front of our staff, and the laptops, and the smartboards on the wall. So, um, it is a, a highly critical piece of, uh, what we do around here, and, uh, we're hoping that we, um, uh, through showing what we're doing i- in our classrooms like this throughout this year, that, uh, our, um, uh, constituents out there will see that we're doing good things with this and it's worthwhile, so.
I have a couple of questions.
Hmm?
Um, I'll start with you, Tom. The usage of smartboards and I, I think the smartboards are in all the elementaries classes?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
There's a reason for that, and I can get to that in a minute, but.
Okay, so of them that are there, um, what's the usage estimate?
I would say that those that have them are very similar to Megan. Um, and I, I'll go back a couple of years, and we started, we started our bond issue in two thousand eight. We had another elementary school open and we were a different grade configuration. So decisions were made about equipment purchases at that time. And so we had, uh, four through six schools and we had K through three schools, and we kind of went one direction with the younger grades and one direction with the older grades. Then those schools got combined together, and then we had, uh, uh, the older grades in that school had one type of technology and the younger grades had another. Well, i- it became fairly evident that that doesn't work really well in a school uh, when it comes to training and all that, but it also became very evident that one of those technologies had really won the teachers over more than the other. Um, unfortunately, our bond is exhausted, and so trying to fill in those classrooms, um, our, our principals have been basically using their capital allocations of the schools to try to fill in those classrooms. So, um, uh, you know, Corey Mizalowski is sitting here in the audience of P, from PSI, and by the end of the school year, he's gonna have fifth, uh, K through fifth grade in his school is gonna be all smartboards. Um, and i- it's really kind of, uh, uh, unfortunately, kind of been that way, cause that's where the money has been available, um, but I see that we're gonna have K-five smartboards probably within the next year, so, all, all of the schools, so.
The other one was for Nate. See, you don't get to escape. Um, so, uh, uh, they were talking earlier about, uh, well, you know, I'll just jump to the question. Um, the, um, electronic gradebook?
Okay.
Will that be in the elementaries also, or is it just the middle school?
We have been working on integrating the elementary, it's been a slow go, it's been a conversation probably over the last couple of years to start using gradebook more efficiently and effectively in the elementary schools, but we've still been in kind of a holding pattern where we're not quite there yet. Teachers typically in the elementary schools are using the gradebook on marking day to enter grades, and that's as far as it is right now. But i- it is a conversation we have regularly about that we want to filter it down, and it does take that time, and it does take us affording that training opportunity to help those teachers to become proficient in using the tool, that we have to have first, we need to make sure we have that plan. And I think we've, we've heard us talk about it, we've said it, but I don't know that we have the plan yet to make sure that we can enroll it into those grade levels and make sure they're using it efficiently and effectively. But one of the main reasons we talked about it too is that when these students stream into the middle school, uh, the, the parents have a portal to be able to access grade information, you have some of that opportunity. Well, we have all four elementaries coming into the middle school at one time, and then you have all these parents that need to learn this, so we're talking too about, you know, opening up fifth, fourth, starting with those grade levels where parents can kind of see some of the activities that those students are doing during the course of the year, rather than just at that specific marking time.
Sure, sounds like a great idea to incorporate these students into the sixth grade as long with, along with the parents.
Absolutely.
And it also ties back into what Megan was doing with her classrooms.
Correct. Any other questions?
Thank you, we appreciate it, Nate, glad you got a chance here, that was good. Tom, uh, once again, thank you all for this presentation, and to the people out there in Television Land, this is vital to us, passing this technology levy this year is absolutely crucial to this district, and we'll be out to you, showing you more of this stuff, and, but today I think we showed pretty clearly how this is integrated, both for the teachers and for the students and for the parents, to get everybody integrated into the system, thanks a lot, appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is the school calendar discussion, and Kimberly, you'll lead that?
Good evening, Dr. Bowers and members of the board. Um, we are doing something a little unusual and unique tonight, um, including the conversation of, um, how we're using our late start early releases and providing you data around those points, as well as talking about our calendar for the upcoming two years. So that being said, I'm gonna pass, um, the mic on to Mike.
Mike.
I like it.
I'll have, uh, I'd like, uh, the PD committee members and, uh, at-large members, please come on up as well. Now if I can get this thing to work. Nate?
He's gone. He's there.
Just trying to get the, the work.
What are you doing?
I just signed up for that TOESS time there, Mr. Nordy.
See? Thank you, Nate. Did you do it, huh?
No.
What's going on, Nate?
I'm as good at this as Senior Mizalowski.
There, oh, or was that the Elmo?
That's the Elmo.
So now you want the blue button to show? The blue light? Computer cable.
This is a new technology for me.
Here comes the true expert.
He's a doctor.
No, just trying to get the power point to go up.
Yeah, they want that.
So you, you didn't touch any of this yet?
But he was pushing.
You want the blue, you want the blue one to, to be lit.
And is it?
Uh, from there it is, yeah.
Okay, and you're locking it?
Pass that tech levy.
We need this stuff updated. What is this guy? It's a blue? This is a tech commercial right here.
How many, how many administrators does it take?
I usually just push buttons.
There we go.
All right.
Success. Talks among yourselves? Just not about me? I did. Dr. Bowers, uh, Chairperson Richardson, thank you for allowing us to come in today. Uh, we're a part of the, uh, larger conversation about the school calendar. Um, as in past years, we've come to you to advocate for a continuance of our early release late start days, which, uh, the district has gracefully allowed for and has, uh, these days are very, uh, critical for many of the things that you've al- already witnessed here today with, with, uh, technology and training. Uh, the, the same types of, uh, trainings that go on for technology and best practice instruction are, uh, part and parcel of our eight early release days that we have throughout the, the calendar year. So I'm here, uh, as a representative of the, of the district's profession- So I'm here as a representative of the, of the district's professional learning community, committee, along with several other folks who are either a part of that committee or are representatives from a building, and each one of us are going to be speaking a little bit about our, our proposal for our early release late start days. As we have come before you before, this is a proposal to the superintendent to continue our early release late starts. What we have now are late start Mondays and early release Fridays, one of those per month. We have eight of them over the course of, of a nine-month school year. We have gone back and forth on the impacts of this. The, obviously, there's student improvement impacts, there's teacher development impacts, there's childcare costs and concerns that we always are keeping in the back of our minds, oftentimes in the forefronts of our minds when we're thinking of these things. And we're also thinking about class time for, for kids on those days that were two hours early or out early or two hours late starting. Obviously, kids aren't being in a classroom, and so we have to legitimize our reason for, for asking for those times, and that's what we're here to do today. Background, we have many instructional trends that are going on and, and, and different initiatives that we have been asked to master, not just try, but master, and those things take time. And, and these, and that's just a, a small litany of the list that we have, ultimately with the goal of impacting student improvement. You've asked for teacher data before, this is just a continuation of that teacher data. We have several points here of teacher absences for PD purposes, and you can see from '09 when we started ramping up our early release late start, we had quite a few for PD purposes only, and you can see what's happened to those PD days, teacher absences for PD purposes. They've obviously gone down over time, so it's a good trend, and it's continuing.
And are you saying, Mike, are you saying that's because where they're getting the extra training in the early release time so they're not missing school?
It certainly is part of it. I can't say that it's the sum reason, but it is certainly a part of it. Teachers aren't being pulled out like they used to be to attend trainings for different initiatives like they were at one time, and because of the early release late start, we're afforded more time to do those in-house versus going away or pulling a teacher out for the whole day because we have a, a routine early release or late start time to make those things happen. Each one of these folks are going to be speaking a little bit about their own usage in their site, and we're going to start with Aquila, and Aquila is going to be represented by Ellen Giordano, who is an ESL teacher at Aquila. So Ellen.
Yes. As he said, I'm an ESL teacher at Aquila. We have at this very moment 97 students that are on our list for second language at home. We have others as well, but they've been so successful that they're out of the program. What we have done this past year is taken two of those release days and had some come in and talk to us about Psyop training. It's really a four or five day full day training, which I have attended, but they brought it down to two hours and two hours, and then also had small group meeting times with the grade levels. Our, our scores for reading for ESL in 2011 was 32% of the ELL students were proficient in reading. This is for MCAs, and 2011, 55% of the ELL students were proficient in reading, and there's a lot of things that attribute to that. But what the Psyop training did is it showed, it was really good teaching practices for all children. For example, one of them was posting content objectives and language objectives, and you post them up on the wall. For example, I will write and speak in complete sentences, which is just not an ESL problem. It's a problem with a lot of children that they speak in snippets rather than complete thoughts, and so we visit that every day. A content objective would be something like, I can discuss the reasons for the beginning of the Civil War, or something like that, but it's posted up there, and they know what they're looking at. Also, the Psyop training, you generate a lot of background knowledge, and they gave many ways of how to do that, lots of reading and vocabulary building strategies as well, which were terrific, and the teachers really liked it, and I think getting those ideas, those specific ideas helps them out a lot. Let's see, the teachers worked on embedding all these practices that they learned, and also I have been collaborating with the reading specialists as well. I basically wrote my own curriculum for about 17 years, and then I have, we have integrated our programs a little bit because we still have to teach those children how to speak English. We just got four new students last week, no English, so we have those guys, and then the ones that have been around for a little while or a couple of years need help in, in reading because they're juggling two languages. And so we've been really successful in that, too. We use the Read 180 program at times, the Wiggle Works program, and also a new one that we're trying out called System 44, which is phonics-based. So we've had a lot of success, and we just took the NWA map testing and, and reading, and the scores were fantastic. So I'm hoping that we'll, we'll be able to continue that for the MCAs. That's what we did those two days.
Kelly, introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Kelly Etienne. I'm the PYP coordinator at Susan Lindgren, and I just want to talk a little bit about some of the highlights of our release days. We focused on equity, and we know that to best reach the needs of our students, we need to develop relationships, and in order to do that, we need to understand our students. And so last year, we had Dr. Bravada Akansanya presented to us two different times, and her focus is failure is not an option multicultural pedagogy. And that release day, after that, the, when we met in PLCs, particularly during our IB-focused PLCs, there was a lot of profound discussions about how the things that she was telling us could affect the knowledge that we wanted our students to walk away with. And one grade in particular changed a lot of the learning that they were doing within that unit of inquiry to make it more focused on people and their impact on the past and how that has shaped our understanding of the present. And so in order to support that, we also purchased materials, a lot of biographies for our bookroom at various levels to help the students read and understand that, prior to that, the focus was on a lot about technology, and they still use that, but they, they incorporated the people and the relationship part, and that has been very successful, and the teachers have been really pleased with the comments that the students are making and the level of knowledge that they're taking away. It's not something that can be measurable in a test, but it is showing up in their summative assessments and the things that we're doing within the units of inquiry. This year, we went through a very large self-study in preparation for our IB evaluation, which comes at February 28th and March 1st at Susan Lindgren. Cross our fingers. But one of the things that we realized is that we needed to do a better job of working with our students whose mother tongue is not English, so that who speak English has a second language. And of our 78 identified ELL students, 21% of those students are Somali. Now, we also have many more Somali students in our school, but they don't necessarily receive ELL services. But on our February release day, we are going to have Dr. Ahmed Ismail Yusuf come and speak with us about Somali culture, Somali past, some of the reasons that they brought us here, and he wrote this book, Somalis in Minnesota. And I suspect that Dr. Yusuf's, what he shares with us will have a profound effect the same way that Dr. Akansanya's work did. We don't have the time to do those kinds of speakers and to have that thoughtful discussion during staff meetings, so the length of time that we're afforded during release times really allows us to get deeper and to work harder at developing our knowledge about our students. So thanks.
I had a question for you.
Sure.
The doctor that's going to come to speak at your group, are other groups invited to that, other schools, or is it just?
Yeah, well, at this time, it's Aquila and ourselves. We're waiting to hear from the Peter Hobart. Their professional development committee has to make the decision of whether they'd like to participate. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the March one. That's when we're having a speaker from the MD come and talk to us about math. I'm confusing things. This is just for Susan Lindgren. However, last year, when we had our talk with Dr. Bravada, we recommended her to other sites, and I'm not sure if she, we did share her name and contact information and that she was somebody that would be really worth having in.
So she's been to your school before?
Yep, she was there twice last year, and she was actually at Peter Hobart several years ago. Oh, she's coming to Peter Hobart. So once, you know, we get a hold of somebody good, we do share.
Sounds like it's good results.
All right, thank you.
Park Spanish immersion and the middle school could not send representatives today, but they did want me to impart that they feel very strongly that both, or that early release and late start days are, are very crucial for the implementations that they're going through at, at both sites, whether it's language immersion or with the junior highs case, the new IB journey that they're taking. Next, we'll be hearing from the senior high. No, we won't. Their representative want me to share about Dr. Shiroki Holly. Dr. Holly was, was here during early release late start days, and what they're finding from, from his discussion, obviously, the reason why we're here is to prove our case for early release late start, there's 110 teachers at the high school. They couldn't send all 110 teachers to a, to a Dr. Shiroki or Dr. Holly event, so they brought them in during early release late start. Wouldn't have been made possible without the early release late start. They needed the time to make it happen, and obviously, they're following up with his training methodologies and his strategic practices in their PLC studies as well. And now going into ECSE.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Trombley. I'm a speech and language pathologist in early childhood special education, which means I get to work with our youngest and littlest learners, the babies, the toddlers, and the preschoolers. We have been using professional development this year, really focusing and being influenced from our early learning strategic plan, and I believe Louise Raths was here earlier discussing that plan. During each late start and early release, we're focusing on early literacy and equity, which are two main components of that plan. For early literacy, we've been trained with the SEEDS Early Literacy, which is a curriculum from the University of Minnesota, and we're really excited about this because there's not often a ton of curriculum for the babies, toddlers, and preschoolers. Our staff's also been trained with IGDEs, which is the individual development, developmental and growth indicators, and this is a tool that measures pre-literacy skills. What we've really been focusing on is vocabulary acquisition because we know that research is linking vocabulary to early literacy skills. And so during the early release and late start days, we are using our Google Docs and other documents to analyze the data and look at the progress children are making to really inform our instruction, and it's been really exciting work. With IGDEs, the data is kept internally, but also through the University of Minnesota, so we're able to compare children to themselves, children to other children in the classroom, and then also looking at our children compared to the state and the nation, so it's pretty exciting. The second piece of our work during the early start, late, or, I'm sorry, late start early release days has been our equity work, and we've been doing anti-bias education for young children and ourselves, which is really supporting children's development in our multicultural world. Our staff has participated in equity walkthroughs. We've been attending the WMEP trainings. We were also fortunate to be a part of Dr. Holly's trainings, and that was pretty cool because sometimes in early childhood, we're kind of by ourselves, and we got to collaborate with the high school. I'm the professional development rep for early childhood, and it was pretty cool to see all these emails being bounced back and forth between the high school and us, and just showing this passion and this enthusiasm that was kind of fueled by Dr. Holly, so we've been pretty excited.
Can I just?
Introduce yourself.
Okay. My name is Jen Ziff, and I'm a third grade teacher at Peter Hobart. Maybe if technology works. You heard my teammate Megan talk about response to intervention a little bit when she was talking about technology, and I'm going to talk to you today solely about response to intervention at Peter Hobart. Hopefully, you've heard RTI or response to intervention in some other presentations before tonight, but in case you haven't, RTI is something that's data-driven. I know you guys like data, you want to see results, you want to see that it's impacting our student learning. That's 100% of what RTI is about. RTI is reteaching continued learning or enrichment depending on the student's needs. So Megan talked about using a pre-test and a post-test. That's for essential learning, that's our core learning, that grade level's outcomes, all students are exposed to that. But after we're done with Unit Six, we'll go back and either reteach, continue for those students who almost have it, or enrich those students who got it, so that we're not leaving any students behind. We don't do this for everything. We don't have enough time in the day to teach all of the, the core standards as it is. RTI is only on the essential learnings, the things that we deem essential for either something that they're going to learn later on in third grade, something that they have to know how to do the next year, so for us in fourth grade, or a life skill, something that they have to leave school knowing how to do just to survive in their day-to-day life. So RTI started two years ago. We were looking at our MCA data in 2010, 11, third grade had a 55% gap between our black and white students in reading and a 59% gap in math, and that's alarming. We were sick to our stomachs, and we sat down as a team and said, what can we be doing differently? And we started on our RTI journey, and this was something just sparked within our team, and we needed something to solve that problem. So we started RTI that year, midway through the year. By the end of 2011 and 12, by using RTI and common planning time of our core curriculum, like Megan talked about with guided math and things like that, we were able to close the gap to 46% in math and 25% in reading. So we know math is an area that the district still needs to be working on. A small data insight to that is I took the NWA math test with my class today, and over half of my students still need more work time because they're doing so well on this test, and they're using the math skills that we've been teaching them through technology, through their RTI groups, to get higher level questions, to have to spend more time showing their work. And of my 11 that finished, seven out of the 11 made or exceeded their typical growth for the year. So just a few data points, you know, in the moment type of thing. After our success with RTI in third grade, we started talking within our building about it. Because of the phenomenal results we were seeing, our staff felt that it was really important to start to embed this in the Peter Hobart culture. And so we, as a building, have used considerable amount of our late start and early release days to start the RTI journey within, within our building. Here is two different data sets of RTI within our building at different grade levels. So you can see the kindergarten one on top. They are hoping that kindergartners will know 20 letter names by winter benchmarking. Well, the 31 that didn't know it, or knew zero to 20 before they started their RTI, it's now down to 13. So only out of the 80-some kindergartners that we have data on, only 13 of them aren't at the winter benchmark as compared to the 31 before, and we're moving chunks of them up. Again, you know, it's really easy to do in kindergarten, letter names, letter sounds, little quick RTI units. Kindergarten actually is doing a lot of RTI. Their biggest problem is they don't have enough time in the day for half-day kindergarten to get it all in. The second data set is second grade RTI and short vowel sounds. That's essential to developing their phonemic awareness, their decoding skills, those types of things, and so, thank you, Mr. Nordine. So within the second grade group, when they first started, there were a lot of students all over the board knowing zero up to six of their short vowel sounds. After they did RTI unit for about After they did RTI unit for about three and a half, four weeks, three days a week, about 20 to 30 minutes within those timeframes, they managed to move all of their students up into the upper end of it. And so again, this is not something that students are having to sit through who already know it, but this is essential learning. They have to know how to identify short vowel sounds, they have to know letter names. But the students who do know those things are doing some other sort of enrichment or You've heard from a lot of us tonight about the various ways that we use these late start and early release days, and I can't even begin to tell you how invaluable they are. Without this time, we wouldn't be able to collaborate, we wouldn't sit down, be able to sit down and have the conversations at length about our data and what we can be doing to help close that achievement gap, to close that racial predictability, and help our students pass that one test, but also become lifelong learners with a solid foundation of the skills that they need to have for the next grade and beyond.
Questions of the group that we have assembled here. I know Kimberly has not finished yet, so.
We moved towards the sort of predictable late start Monday, early release Fridays. I think within the last year, maybe two. How has that schedule worked?
In terms of, for parents, we hear a mixed bag. Prior to Mondays and Fridays, we were at Tuesdays and Thursdays. We heard a lot of complaints from community members about that, in that there's, in fact, the Monday-Friday thing came from parent survey data. They suggested it as a possible alternative to Tuesday-Thursday, to help families with their own weekend plans. I would say that in terms of a staff, or from the district's perspective, at least from a teacher's perspective, they seem to be working very well Mondays and Fridays. I have not spoken to community members at large, and nobody has contacted me about them, so.
No contact is probably a good sign.
Just to follow up on that, then, is there any concern about attendance, like on Friday afternoons or whatever? Has that been an issue at all?
Attendance in terms of?
By staff?
Not to me, but I'm not at that level, so maybe Kimberly would be able to speak to that, so. From?
From staff. I was talking with the teacher. She was gifted and talented. She split, at the time, she was split between three schools, and she was Wednesdays and Fridays at one school, however she did it. Anyway, as she was putting her data together, she saw that the kids that she had on Fridays, because we have the release days on Fridays, we have holidays on Fridays, were gone a lot on Fridays. And she saw that the children that she had on Fridays missed 30% of the year. And she, and Mondays, it wasn't so bad, because we don't have that many things on Mondays. So her suggestion, and then I checked with some other specialists also, like the media specialist who only has them once a week, and various people that do not see them every day, it was an issue. For media, where she's trying to teach, for example, the fifth graders to get ready for exhibition, and also skills they need for the middle school, she has one or two fifth grade teachers' classes on Fridays, and sometimes she does, one time in the fall, just this fall, she didn't see them for a month. I think it was November. So if you look at the calendar, you see we're absent a lot of the Fridays. So their suggestion was to change the days. And I was thinking, if parents knew the impact on having the Fridays off, maybe they'd change their minds and want to change to Tuesdays and Thursdays like we used to, or change it up throughout the month.
Mike, I was wondering if we've benchmarked the quantity of early release, late start dates with other districts, and also have we looked at what they are focusing on versus what we focus on?
There are several districts around us that do this as well, once a month. Some, there are more districts that do four to six in a year. In terms of what days do they fall on, it's all over the board. My own home district, which is Lakeville, used to be Tuesdays, Thursdays, and they went to Mondays, Fridays. So I think some districts are finding that Mondays, Fridays fit better with family schedules. In terms of other data about early release, late start, I would venture a guess that Kimberly might know more regarding those things. So Kimberly? I don't know. I know what I know.
We could certainly do some comparisons with other school districts to find out what they're doing, but we haven't done that at this juncture. Any other questions? All right. I'm just going to run you through quickly.
Jim?
Well, I was just going to make a comment that, you know, we've been at this now for, when we decided to add them, it's been maybe four years. And it was a big concern at the time, we added it because of the impact on families and daycare. And pretty much through a couple cycles of presentation by the schools, I know we were pretty good about asking how it's been working, and we've never heard anything negative, I don't think, about it. Occasionally, we've gotten some emails, maybe, that have referenced it for parents, but not very frequently. I don't know if anyone else on the board has, or the administration. So, you know, on the whole, from what we're hearing, we had an elaborate presentation of what's going on here, but I'll say, in the last two, three, four years, all the principals too have chimed in, saying how valuable it is. So, and that was a concern, because we had originally, when Dr. Bowers started, we had done an audit at the school districts, and that was one of the issues, was our kind of contact days and losing that, but, so we were concerned about that, and as well as the impact, but it seems like it's just, we're doing great things with it, and as long as we're still getting the value out of it, I don't see why we would retreat from it.
I would say the input that I've gotten that would be somewhat concerning about it is just what was described by the professional development committee, that, you know, it is problematic when they are on Monday, Friday, and you should possibly look at fluctuating the days, and that might help those specialists. But it's really the specialist group that I'm hearing that from the most.
Or is that a question of scheduling specialists' time differently? I mean, that'd be the alternative.
Do we have a solution? Do we have one site that's actually solved that problem?
Well, we were actually just discussing that for a multitude of reasons, but going to a day one through five schedule, if the entire district adopted that, would solve the problem, in theory, haven't put out on paper yet, but if every day one was a GT day and an orchestra day at Peter Hobart, and every day three was a GT day, it wouldn't matter what day of the week it is, the specialists would just travel to their schools on those days, but it would also allow us to pick up with specialists wherever we left off. So it would at least rotate the number of times specialists would miss a class, or like, for example, my class. You know, they might miss me this Monday on a late start, but they wouldn't miss me again, maybe all year. So, I mean, it's something that would have to be seamless throughout the district, because we share staff, but it's a possibility that could help that.
All right. What you're going to see before you is, we have a couple of calendar options. We were approached, or the district was approached by some of the units, requesting that we look at, how could we look at our calendar differently, in terms of getting staff and students out a little bit earlier? Because as we continue to add additional staff development days, things like that to our calendar, it does increase the length of the school year. One of the things that we looked at, if you look at the traditional calendar, just to highlight basically what a traditional calendar looks like, it's the typical start the day after Labor Day, have the two-week winter break, a one-week spring break, and then leave for the school year. So what we did, if you look at option two, we actually looked at how we might be able to shorten some of the break times, and we continued to come back to, winter break was the one that we could look at shortening. And some of it really depends on how the holidays fall on the calendar, as to what makes sense, but we were able to actually shave off a few days and put a conference comp day at the end of the school year where students wouldn't need to return. If you look at year two, it's the very same. The traditional calendar is all those breaks that we've become used to seeing as a school district, and the shorter abbreviated version is shortening up winter break. And one of the things that we have to always make sure that we're doing is to ensure that we have a balance between our quarters. We also have to ensure that we have the proper number of student contact days, as well as staff contact days. So, and also, I should share with you, I think a question arose about, is this the calendar, the one that you're seeing before you, is that provided to parents in our community? And the answer is no. The one that you're looking at is really for internal purposes only. It's actually a little complicated to look at, but our staff are used to seeing it. What we provide for our families, and we will have up tomorrow, is a narrative of the options on the webpage for our parents to take a look at, and if they wanted to provide any feedback, can certainly do that. We also provide a calendar to all families that just make it much easier for them to review versus this very tiny color-coded calendar. Yes?
So the big difference is, you chop off in each, between the traditional, the options, is take a few days off, winter break, and shorten it towards the end of the year. No, I know for, I mean, since I remember going to kindergarten, here, two weeks at winter break has always been the case. And I'm wondering, very traditional, more so in this district than maybe a couple other surroundings, but, and I always understood that a lot of it, maybe was that that's what the union had preferred as well, and have you, is that?
We actually got some, we got some input from our teachers' unit, and interestingly enough, it was two-thirds to one-third that were in favor of the traditional calendar versus the one-third that wanted to see a shorter calendar. One thing, as well as?
So there's some disparity there. I mean, so it's not, still a majority.
You'll see differences to, Jim, just in how the, we had to move some dates around for end of semester, grading days, things like that, but for the most part, how we shaved time off the calendar was reducing the two-week winter break. Yes, Larry?
I think the two-thirds, one-third is probably similar to what I've heard from parents on the time I've been on the board. You've got some parents that definitely want to get out earlier in the summer, because they have things to do, or they have vacations planned, or whatever, but you have probably two-thirds of the parents seem to prefer, at least of the people I've talked to, seem to prefer the two weeks for winter break, and, you know, I think it really just comes down to what do the majority of people want?
That's a very true statement. I think people become very used to the school year looking very traditional, and there's nothing wrong with that. It's just, it's what people have become accustomed to. And we have to look at the parents' needs, community needs, staff needs, programmatic needs.
And shortening the winter break buys you one or two days at the end of the school year, it doesn't buy a huge amount of time out early, just a day or two. My personal take this year, as we were heading into personal break, was, as into the winter break, was that people really needed a two-week break this year. It was, it seemed to be a very tough December, and we had just had some national crises, and I just thought people needed the break to come back, recharge, to finish strong in the second half of the year. So my personal bias, I'll just say it, this year leans towards the two-week break, and I hear the majority of teachers and families seem to prefer that. But I assume the narrative that goes up on our website will be very clear about this change, so that we can get feedback, and it'll, you know, it'll vary.
Yes, absolutely.
The only other issue then on that is, you know, starting early, San Luis Park did use to start earlier, before Labor Day, but the state law that passed, I don't know, four or five years ago, has changed that, maybe it's longer, six years ago.
Yeah, on that topic, I know Edina's discussing that tonight, and the reason they qualify has to do with the amount of construction. Do we qualify to do that?
We didn't request a waiver. You would need to request a waiver and come up with a reason behind why you'd want to start before Labor Day, and then we have to be approved. That's my understanding. But that is, as I understand it, Edina's reasoning behind wanting to start before Labor Day.
Say that again?
It's my understanding, the reason that Edina is looking at starting prior to Labor Day, has to do with construction schedule the following spring.
And that is an exception to the law, that we did take advantage of a few years ago. But, you know, that issue keeps coming up. I think AMSD has it, you know, of trying to allow local schools to, districts to make that decision. And I don't know where it's going to go this year, but.
What I don't think you're hearing from us is any concern about the late start or early release days, at least, again, I can officially only speak for myself, I think that's been very valuable. But I think Ellen raised a great point, and we just need to make sure that that isn't disproportionately impacting any particular aspect of education for our kids, and I suspect the answer has more to do with adjusting the specialist's training, whether it's the, you know, day one through five, or whatever, whatever attention to that is, rather than changing the early, early release, late start day. It is easy to get those confused, isn't it?
It is.
Right. I know people around here start early, so that wouldn't be different, but it's probably not changing that schedule, because it sounds like that's settled in fairly well. I mean, I personally don't care which days, but what I'm hearing is it is working pretty well on the Monday-Friday, except for the, on kids that are working with particular specialists, and we need to be attentive to that.
And I think that's a very good point. It's something that we can bring up at one of our principals' meetings to discuss the model that Peter Hobart brought forward this evening that they think would resolve that issue. Thank you.
Kimberly, thank you. It's always good to hear from our teachers. Mike, thank you very much. Ellen, Kelly, Kelly, and Jen? Okay.
Yeah, what's the process on the calendar?
What is the next step here, Kimberly?
Our next step will be to post this on the webpage, and any kind of information, we'll put an email out, if anybody has particular comments, we'll put an email address that will address those issues, and then we'll compile that information and come back, I believe on the 25th of February, for your final approval.
One suggested that, I don't know how often parents are always going, I mean, I don't know if it should go home in backpacks, too, if you have, if you want, if you want to comment on the calendar, go to the website or something, I just don't know, posting it on the website is going to necessarily attract the feedback we're trying to get.
I think in the past also, they've sent it to the PTO meetings, so that's where we used to get it.
That's fantastic. I'll talk with Sarah Thompson, being the new person, it's, I don't know necessarily what we've done in the past, but I will work with her to get that out, is to the majority of people that we can.
Thank you. Just for the television audience, the response to the calendar is due in two weeks at our next board meeting, and so we just want to make sure that's clear. So for feedback from parents who want to give feedback, getting it out to the PTSOs and the other leadership groups, we want to make sure we hear back from them within the next two weeks. Thank you. Next subject on the agenda, Sandy is going to talk about space needs, and she has brought Paul with her.
Yes, the district has decided to go forth with an elementary facilities task force, which we actually have met twice already, and what we're doing is addressing the elementary school space issues. And here's the long list of members who have been designated to be a part of this task force. And as you will see through the list, we have one parent from each elementary school, one teacher, one principal, as well as two administrators from the district office, and world architects, Paul Applikowski will be, is facilitating this process for us. And as a way to understand how this task force came about, and a history behind the district, and where we're at with the elementary buildings, we're going to do some background as far as what happened at the last facility some background as far as what happened at the last facility study, which was done in 2009, and Wold Architects helped us with this study, and it was a study actually with the elementary and secondary buildings altogether, and we are taking, we, in this task force, we are looking at enrollment, we are taking a look at Hazel Reinhardt's study, and looking at how it slightly increases over the next 10 years, and taking that into consideration during this whole conversation with the task force. We also took a look at what kind of changes that occurred since the last facility study in 2009, and some of these changes really did have a significant effect. And as you can see, there's some changes from 2005, enrollment for kindergarten through fifth grade has increased considerably since 2009. As you can see, in October 1st of 2009, we had 1,936 students. October 1st of 2012, which is in the current year, we had two, we have 2,116. So there has been a considerable increase in our enrollment since 2009. We did increase offerings of all-day kindergarten, which did increase the need of using six additional rooms. We also added the Read 180 programming, which needed two additional rooms to be needed for that program. And with that, I'm going to have Paul explain something that he did to come up with an analysis of, of what happened since 2009.
Sure, and part of the, part of the statistics that you see up here, in working with the group, one of the options that we're obviously looking at is, do you need to open a school again to accommodate the enrollment that's happening? And in doing that, what we've done is prepared an option for their consideration that looks at the parameters of the 2009 study, and what would happen if we reverted to that. So Sandy talked a little bit about some of the extra rooms that you've allocated since that study. One of the big changes that's happened between then and now is the district is planning on classrooms of about an average of 24 for Cave 5. In that study, the average was planned around 26, which only sounds like a couple seats, but when you multiply it across the whole district, it adds up to a couple hundred seats total, and that obviously makes a huge difference across the district, especially when you're tight. You're, you're basically full right now, the way you're using the building, so those 200 seats would make a huge difference. The way we've calculated it, even assuming, assuming that 26, you'd have about 222 open seats now, which is, for those of you that remember the planning, then there was always the discussion of whether you could leave 10% open. That puts you right about that 10% open spot, and also poised quite nicely for the, the potential increase of 100 or so more students that are projected in the near future. So we wanted to cover that because it answers some important questions, I think, about the, the decision in 2009. It also illuminates a little bit, I think, if you open up, you're, you're basically at capacity now, opening up that building again would add another 600 seats to the district, which is a little bit beyond the, the projected growth that you see coming.
And, and I think another thing to add to that is, for the current year, last year we had actually 19 students waitlisted, meaning that there's 19 students wait, waiting to have open enrolled, so there isn't much growth that happened at this point in time to fill those seats if they were to be opened.
Another thing said, I don't know how it fits in, the governor has proposed, it's now, I mean, we have it in some of the schools where we're offering it now, but if it's, you know, if we have the money to, to do that, that they pass this year, then we're going to need more space. And I think we ought to add that onto the chart, what if we do that? I mean, that, who knows where that's going to fall.
Yeah, that's obviously something that we're going to factor in and have as sort of the pros and cons or impacts of making changes. I will point out that one of the changes you have made is to increase the amount of all-day kindergarten, so you only really have a handful of rooms that you need to implement all-day kindergarten. I think three was the number that came up last. You have about three half-day rooms now, so you need three more to make those full-day rooms. So it's not an order of magnitude different.
And I think the governor's proposal is to increase the amount of funding, but it wouldn't fully fund all-day kindergarten, so it's, it's still, we'd be in the same, roughly the same financial boat, a little bit better, but it wouldn't be full funding.
Okay, thanks, Paul. And what we developed is, what is the charge of this committee? And this will explain what the committee's, is charged to do, and what, one thing is to quantify the building capacity from early childhood through fifth grade, and provide guidelines for space standards and building equity across the district. And what they are really charged to do is develop scenarios, which we started doing at this last meeting that we had, and accommodate, which will accommodate the district's K through 5 enrollment for the next five years. And from this discussion, what we want from this committee is to recommend two options to address the elementary facility needs to the superintendent. And the desired product of the task force is a proposal that recommends the optimal use of facilities, accommodates the projected enrollment, and supports educational delivery along the rationale for the recommendations. And of course, the desired outcomes is a plan to accommodate enrollment over the next five years without compromising educational needs, as well as minimizing the increase in operational costs as a part of any proposed changes. And with that, we have developed a website, which is on, at this point, on our slpschools.org main website, and there is a link that you can go to, it's called Elementary Task Force, Utilization Task Force, I believe is what you put it under. And we also have, and that, on that website, we have put the documents that we've given to the committee at this point in time, which is for two meetings, so you can review what we reviewed at the committee, as well as there's an email option for anybody to be able to email comments and, to us, which we will then present to the task force for discussion. So with that, that is all I have for you unless there's any further questions.
Yeah, I have a couple here. It's good that you guys are addressing the space issue, not only the class size, because that was a, an issue that was brought up for, at the meetings earlier. My question is, are you, is your task force going to visit the schools? Is that part of the, the information that you guys want to gather for the people on the task force or not? I, I found it very valuable for me to go to Peter Hobart and spend some time with Shelley, and walk through there and actually get a feel for the space, and I will also be doing that at other schools, but I was wondering if that was something you guys are planning on doing, or videotaping it for people that don't have access or time to do that?
Well, we haven't at this point. I mean, we certainly can, you know, talk to the task force about that option of doing so, but the principals are very involved in that task force, and, and we have met with the principals in developing assumptions and so forth in, in developing this process, and what kind of options to come out from it, but we certainly can, you know, bring it up to the task force as well as far as that recommendation.
Yeah, I am wondering, and you don't have to answer this now, but I'm just going to be curious about how the task force is, is thinking in terms of equity, whether there is any priority amongst various programming needs. You know, it's one thing to have band or orchestra in a cafeteria versus a room, it's another thing to me about how you're meeting the math and reading needs of students, and what those particular space needs may be, and, you know, that kind of analysis may prove to be helpful. I'm wondering if Alec Math, for example, requires any more rooms, and if we're going to be needing to do that more in the future? I'm wondering if we're seeing more needs for more Read 180, and how that is going to, is projected to impact our space needs going forward as we're getting more test data, and as we're seeing some of our demographics potentially changing. Those are the kinds of questions I may have, and I'm hoping that as you study this on the committee, you're, you're looking at that kind of an analysis too.
Yeah, and we actually have a meeting set with the principals to have discussions more in-depth about the assumptions used such as that, to make sure that the needs are being met.
I'm having a tough time projecting what two options could be. So could you maybe take me through maybe an example? Because the way I've been thinking about it is just in terms of a list of projects coming from each school and a prioritization of what those projects are, and then subsequently, you know, costs based on that, and maybe funding, you know, after that, funding mechanisms that we could use lease levy or, or referendum, but just the first part of that, I mean, what, what do you expect in terms of options?
Paul actually has probably them memorized. We did go through some options at the, yeah.
I don't have them all memorized, but we really just got to the point of developing that list of options with this group, but I, and there's seven, I think, something that we're working on right now. I think I would answer your question in a little bit different way. It's not our intent to limit the board's options as they come to you, for one, so you'll see the process, you'll see all the options that were considered, and there'll be two top ones that the group will recommend to the superintendent, and we'll then go through a further vetting process, I'm sure, on its way to the board. Also would clarify that this group's charge is not to solve every facility problem the district has. Their title is Facility Utilization Committee, and it's really about space use and enrollment. So this group is focused much more strongly on how do you solve the space crunch that you have coming? We're also working with administration on an analysis of the costs of deferred maintenance in your district, and that will also be coming to them. So that group is aware of that, they'll have some filter on that, but they're not going to go through all of those deferred maintenance projects and sort them out, and present them back to the district in some kind of two-option packages. So the two options are really centered about the space needs, not about all the other projects that could happen.
Another question, kind of in that ballpark, but I'll lead us into there. Over the years, over the short years, our technology has changed dramatically with iPads and Nooks and all the kinds of other readers. Are, are you considering the media space and working with Tom and his team with understanding what the next five years, what that space will look like and feel like, and then working that into some of the future designs of the spaces in the schools?
Should I do a short answer or a long answer? I guess the shortest answer I'd give would be no, we're not really making that a part of the committee's charge. We are charged with understanding space use in the elementaries, but we have not seen a future plan, agenda from the district about what they intend to do with elementary instruction and technology in order to let space react to that. So I think that's an important thing to keep in mind, but without an established district program, or at least an outline of what that plan would be, it'd be difficult to gauge the space impact. I think to probably put some brackets around that, the scope of those changes probably isn't as dramatic as you might think in terms of space. The, the architectural jargon for what you're talking about is the 21st century classroom, 21st century learning concepts, and there's a lot of thoughts about what that might be. Not many of them take more square footage than you have now, so in a rough cut, it doesn't change how much space you need to do instruction. Some of the most, I'd say, out-there ideas involve taking walls down and working in totally different collaborative groups as students. I would suggest that it'd be unlikely that within the next five years or even more that you would move to that radical of a model, and so it'd be difficult to start planning facilities now around that. And there's a lot of things that happen with technology that want to happen within the same-size space units that you have. As to the media center, there's a lot of different things you could do. We are looking at equity of the media centers between the schools, and we can certainly visit with technology about whether or not they feel they're adequate for their plans going forward.
Okay, I like your answer, but I'll challenge it in, in that I work for a company, a medical company, and we're looking at 21st century operating room, which looks different from today. And it's not necessarily having two operating rooms together, but it's utilizing the space that you have with the technology that you have available to you at the time and in the future. So that's what I, the real question that I'm asking is just an architectural look at that.
We'll take that to spirit, and we'll talk to them about technology about that.
Paul, you, you noted the difference in class size as one of the changes. Is, are you, do you have an assumption then? Are you using 24 as assumption going forward?
Yeah, that's, that's typically what we've called that planning parameter, is an assumption. I haven't been able to do the full forensics on the, the 26 that we used back in the day, but it had something to do with your intermediate versus primary, but it was, I believe, the average of what you had going then. The 24 is something that we worked with administration to set this time, it's based roughly on the class size you have now. We debated a bit between 24 and 25, and chose to use 24 because it's a little bit more of a conservative number to use in this case, because we're talking about space.
Just, I lived through years on this board of budget cut year, of after-budget cut year, then, you know, class size always becomes a key focus, you know, now we like where our numbers are at, but we've gone down, and that's pretty rare and uncommon, and so I just caution the use of that, we might need to look at shifting parameters, and, you know, if we're talking about, I mean, you could save, there'd be a number of rooms saved, and then if, you know, we build on, and then our class sizes change, that might be not what we're, wish we had, we, something we wish we hadn't done then, is all. So we need to be cautious, I think, with that number.
Sure. I'm not quite sure which, that could go in all kinds of different directions. Where, our assumption is that your class sizes will stay about where they are. Without other guidance, it's hard for us to, again, predict what you might do.
I had one more question, and I guess a follow-up to Ken's, Ken's idea on the media centers. He and I talked about it at the MSBA meeting, and there was a picture of a school in the paper that had taken all the books out. If we took, and maybe that's the question, if we took all the books out and you only use technology, and again, I'm a book guy, so this was an anathema to me, but at the same time, with, if you took all the books out, created, you just created a whole bunch of space in this media center area. Now, we use it for different things, so I, I kind of second Ken's motion here and say, let's, let's look at that, maybe even seriously, even from a book guy, I'm saying, it, it may be worth looking at the media center areas and saying, you know, are there two more classrooms in there, or something like that?
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is WMEP Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement Changes. Julie is going to take this one on the action agenda, this is the approval that will be brought up as a motion tonight. Julie?
Sure, it's got to be the most boring title of anything on our agenda tonight, but I'll, the actual issue before us is rather simple. WMEP, or the West Metro Education Programs, is a joint power district that we belong to, and it is a school district then, but because it's a joint powers district, any significant changes to its organizational structure have to be approved by all the member districts before it can go forward. And what we're being asked to approve is a current, a change from the current agreement that if you want to pull out of WMEP, you have to give roughly a year and a half, 17 months notice, and to change that to six months, so that if you want to pull out at, as of June 30th, you have to notify WMEP, if a district wants to pull out by June 30th, you have to notice, notify WMEP by December 30th. That's the only date, dates that you can move out just at the end of the school year and fiscal year, and WMEP, the WMEP Board on which I serve as St. Louis Parks representative has recommended approval of this, and for the reasons that are in your packet, says that that's sufficient time for both students and the WMEP schools to operate. Just a little background though on why that's coming before us. Again, WMEP is a voluntary integration district that St. Louis Park has belonged to since it was created roughly 15 years ago, and it's Minneapolis and 10 contiguous west suburban districts. It serves two primary functions. It serves two primary functions. One is providing professional development, and it's interesting that I think all of the presenters that our teachers talked about in terms of the use of our early release, late start days, are providers that teach classes through WMEP. As a district belonging to WMEP, we share a small percentage of our integration revenue, $19 of the $129 per student we get. And exchange get the professional development without charge, and WMEP pays for a sub. So basically, that in itself is a big return on the dollars. St. Louis Park has been a heavy user of the professional development. It's all based around equity, the work with the Pacific Education Group and all that came from, started with WMEP. So that's been a big return to St. Louis Park. The other major activity of WMEP is to run what has been two schools that are merging into one. There is a grade four through eight school in Crystal that has always had a fine arts interdisciplinary perspective, and then there's been a downtown school that's K-12. Several years ago, we decided, the WMEP Board decided to merge those schools, both, they are both called now Fair, which is Fair Crystal, and Fair Downtown for the fine arts interdisciplinary aspect. And K-3 will be downtown. Grades four and five have totally moved to Crystal, and each year, one more grade moves to Crystal. So downtown will be K-3 and 912. Yeah, that's an interesting grade configuration, but it is all considered one K-12 school. We have, St. Louis Park has, I think currently, it's either 43 or 44 students. We have hovered 42 to 44 students who attend the WMEP schools. And so that's one piece of it. There is a separate additional aspect that has been in place for the last eight years or so. WMEP was asked to, and the WMEP districts were asked to participate in the resolution of a lawsuit that was brought eight or so years ago by the NAACP against the state regarding education in the Minneapolis schools in particular. And the resolution was what we knew as the choice is yours, is what we've known for quite a few years. And low-income Minneapolis students were allowed to attend the WMEP district schools, basically from North Minneapolis to the northern districts and South Minneapolis to the southern districts. Sounds like open enrollment, but it provides, the state provides the cost of transportation. So around 2,000 to 2,200 students have taken advantage of that. St. Louis Park's had around just under 300. We've 275, you know, the numbers vary like our enrollment per year, per year, of Minneapolis students who attend our St. Louis Park schools. All of that sounds, and in both of their going, St. Louis Park students who go to the WMEP schools, their funding goes with them. The Minneapolis students who come here, funding goes with them. Little different calculations, they, as we know, there are probably at least a dozen different streams of funding that are attached, potentially attached to students, and which funds go varies. But basically, if we have 44 going and 275 coming in, financially, that's been a good thing for St. Louis Park, as well as having a wonderful additional 275 or so students. However, for Minneapolis, that's not such a good thing. The seats at the WMEP schools are allocated based on the number of resident pupils in a district compared to the total number of students. Minneapolis represents, is by far the largest district, and so they represent about half of the students that go to a WMEP, WMEP school. So they lose about, from their perspective, lose about 500 students to the WMEP schools. And then the 2,000 or 2,200 that are coming through the program that was once known as the choice is yours, and by the way, it does not exist anymore. It's actually not a WMEP official program anymore. It's just something all of the member districts have written into their integration plans. So it is simply part of what we do, and the state is still continuing to fund the transportation. That's another 2,000 or 2,200 out of the Minneapolis schools. So they have lost 2,500 to 27 or, I don't think it's ever gotten over 22 or 23, but they've lost a substantial number of students each year. And they have not taken advantage of the professional development in the same way we and most of the other member districts are. So there's been no pluses and a lot of minuses from Minneapolis. That was, those were a large part of the drivers that led Minneapolis to give WMEP notice about a year ago, January of last year, that they intended to withdraw from WMEP as of June of 2013. That would, they, they're the, you know, 900-pound gorilla in the room, because they are so much larger than the other districts. So that would have had a significant impact on WMEP. And they agreed to reconsider their decision. In fact, their decision was really conditioned on studying it more deeply. And they've done that, and they've come back and with, came back a few months ago with several conditions to their deciding to stay a part of WMEP. And one of them was changing this notice period. They had felt forced to make, give notice earlier than they might have otherwise done because of that 17-month period. So the WMEP Board looked at it and said, as a practical matter, giving notice by December 30th to withdraw from that partnership by June 30th, making that applicable to all member districts. This isn't just a Minneapolis provision. This is just changing the terms for all member districts was reasonable. We figured we'd probably know in advance, as we did with Minneapolis, if somebody was thinking about, if a member was thinking about withdrawing. And a member district would certainly want to be engaging in conversations with their residents who, because all have students who are attending the WMEP schools, as well as all have Minneapolis students under the, this choice is yours model. They would want those things under consideration and in good faith were likely to tell us. Even the, just the six-month notice is sufficiently in advance of the lottery process through which students or families apply to have students obtain one of the seats at the WMEP schools, at the Fair schools, and sufficient budget time period. So, you know, as you think of the St. Louis Park kindergarten enrollment and budget decisions, January through June is the big time. So we thought that was a reasonable change to make, and in order to do that, as I said, as a joint powers district, we have to go out, it can't just be the WMEP Board. We have to get approval from all of the member district boards. So this provision is out for our approval, and I personally think it makes sense, and it is the recommendation from the WMEP Board, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about it.
Julie, I might have, I might have missed this in your presentation, but I'm on the, I'm a representative on the 287 Board, and we had one of the district's elect to withdraw, and there were cost implications of that that are still in dispute. So my question on WMEP is, is this just a budget that's set annually, and so there are no cost implications to us if, if a district withdraws? Or do we have larger concerns if we stay in, or don't you know yet?
No, I think that if WMEP were ever to dissolve, we've got some big issues to figure out in terms of buildings and reserves and that kind of thing. There are fewer if one member pulls out, because it's not a question of ownership of buildings. I think, I know we discussed that, and I think, I don't, I don't think that there are any issues just for withdrawal at this point. It's only if we were, the two buildings are based in Minneapolis and in the Robinsdale District in Crystal, and so there are some, the history on those, it's more about actually first right, a right of first refusal to buy them. But the actual cost is not what you were dealing with 287. And 287 as an intermediate district is a little different structure and responsibilities as well.
So in answer to Nancy's questions, if Minneapolis pulls out, it doesn't cost us any money that we're aware of at this point?
That's true. That is my understanding, and superintendent's nodding her head from the conversations with the superintendents, and that's my recollection. If we hear anything to the contrary, I would let you know.
Thank you, Julie.
And in Minneapolis or anybody else, because this is, others could, although the time period will have passed for this year already, but...
Thank you. At this time, we're down to the consent agenda. It is recommended that the board approve the consent agenda as presented. I need a motion to that effect.
Motion.
Moved by Jim, second by Ken. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That's a 7-0 vote. And now we are down to the action agenda. It is recommended that the board approve the changes presented in the WMEP Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement, allowing members to withdraw from the West Metro program by providing a minimum of six months' notice as presented. Need a motion to that effect?
Subvote.
Moved by Julie, second?
Second.
Second by Larry. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, 7-0 vote, once more. We are down to communications and transmittals. Anyone have any communications or transmittals? Nancy?
I want to just repeat one that we said early on in the meeting, and that is that we're looking at setting up listening sessions in, one in February, one in March, one in April. And I think it might be nice to do one at Peter Hobart, if it's possible.
Thank you. Also, for the television audience, we have not communicated on this. We have begun our search for the new superintendent. As we announced at the last meeting, Dr. Bowers is leaving us, and we'll miss her. It also creates an opportunity for the board to find a new superintendent. This action, first step in this action was started last Saturday. We met as a board, and in a 7-0 vote, we voted to proceed with posting the superintendent position, first of all, internally. We figure, we think, we have a wonderful staff, full of really wonderful people who we want to hear from first, and give them the opportunity to apply for the position. The application period opened up on Monday. It will close on the 5th of February, and the applications must be in by that time. And again, we, we know the strength of our staff. We have some really good people. This is our first step in the process, and we will meet, we're setting up meetings right now to meet and to prepare the criteria for our review as a board and the next step and the process, which is not fully set yet. This is step one in the process, and we'll move forward with that, first receiving the applications for the superintendent position internally. And we encourage all of those in the district to apply who have those qualifications or are close to those qualifications, and we look forward to receiving those applications. Any other communications or transmittals? None appearing? Motion to adjourn.
Some...
That was Ken?
Second.
Thank you. Did you move that way? Larry moved it, Ken second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's a 7-0 vote. We are adjourned.